I'd like to call a sleek, sleek council meeting order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have some additions to the agenda tonight. Actually, under the bills payable, there was that one pager for the Rick Center that's on your counter. And then, under unfinished business, we have the selection board met this morning and we had an update mail today, so that, they asked us to get that on because they are trying to, ATAs are trying to meet this month, so the sooner we get that to them, the better. So that's on there. And then, under new business, item 11-160 is just a replacement motion for the motion that's on the agenda, a replacement of the writing. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Luke Girbert, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Rhodes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a presentation for Karen Leshkovich, who has been in our city hall. You want to come up, Karen?
It's right there.
Karen's been, actually, you know. Okay. So Karen's been working for the city for 21 years. I know this is, oh, I see, already mixed feelings about this. So Karen's one of our frontline people, which is one of the most important jobs because she interfaces with people every single day, and she does it so amazingly diligently, very detailed, always solving problems for people, and we're really going to miss you. But I know your, I know your family's here and you're looking forward to your retirement. And so we just wanted to give you a retirement clock and recognize and say thank you for all your hard work. So here's your clock. She's been working very hard for the city, and I don't know, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. I'd like to thank especially my family. George and Paula are here. Peter couldn't be here. My friends, all of my coworkers in all of the departments and buildings, they all have taught me a lot, and they've really helped me out. I also would like to thank all the staff and the council members that I've worked with and the commission people that I've worked with over the years, and then also my customers and the citizens who have come in and made my job interesting, made it challenging, and made it rewarding. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, citizen comment on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time. Make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Good evening. Mary Hoss, six hundred Canterbury, regarding the Oakwood Cemetery expansion. I looked at some of the paperwork and it appears that it's going to cost $243,000 for 88 crypts. Now, if, the way I decipher that, it's $2,770 for each, and we have a tentative sales for $3,200. So that's an awful lot of work for a lot of little money. I would hope, I did go in and ask to have my name put on the waiting list about three months ago, and Diane said, as yet, they weren't taking the waiting list. And then I asked again this morning, and she said, as yet, they are not taking waiting list. I also asked as far as, which we had years ago, residents and former residents had jurisdiction to buy first, and she said that she understood that Alan had said he thought that this was not legal. I went and seen Alan, and Alan said that that would be up to the Cemetery Board of Appeals. I also called the Lowdy Township Board, and their ashes and their setup is for residents also. So I'm requesting, and hopefully this would be referred to the Cemetery Board of Appeals because there are many questions. And I would hope after 55 years that I could get on the waiting list. I don't know what the rules are. I don't know. Also, as far as the mausoleum that has already been passed as far as cost for the ash containers, I would like to ask if that could be referred to the historical commission, being we have good commissions, because I think it's on the National Register. We're not sure. I asked Diane, I cast a couple other people, and they think the whole cemetery is, I'm not sure. But I was hoping that they could be apprised of what's being proposed for the mausoleum. I went in today, and of course, we have nothing on the stained glass windows for the repair, the quarter rounds. And also, the marble is still all broken, and there was nothing put in for that cost. Our perpetual care fund is basically set for those that are already there and to maintain what's there. I think the $443,000 is somehow, I don't understand the cost. And we only have a million dollars, and we'll get it taken out pretty soon at $250,000.
Is there further citizen comments? Okay, under, we did citizen comments, we have consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Mayor?
I'd like to remove C. 11-152.
Okay, we'll put that in our new business. After 11-160.
I'd vote to approve as amended.
Okay. Move Rhodes, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under unfinished business, 11-19, this Oakwood Cemetery expansion award of construction contract. This is a motion to know if received. That's September 20, 2011 memo from City Superintendent Rubel to award the construction contract to D. N. Higgins Incorporated in the amount of $243,000 for installation of the crypts, retaining wall and fencing for Oakwood Cemetery. To authorize or not authorize, the mayor and clerk execute the contract documents for this project after review and approval by the city attorney, and that the project budget line item 101-990-977-046 be amended from $150,000 to $250,000 to reflect the anticipated cost of the bid and ancillary project expenses. Do we have a motion?
Moved to authorize.
Move Morrow, do we have a second? I'll second it. Discussion. Mr. Rubel?
Thank you. With this award of construction contract to D. N. Higgins, we conclude the planning and, you know, administration stage of the initiative taken well over probably a year and a half ago with one of two things that were going to transpire at the cemetery, one the niche program and now the expansion for the double crypts. The memo contains basically a review of some of the historical work that's gone into the proposal for the project, and the cost analysis at the end was added as a preliminary draft only to show that what a, an example of rates would be in order to not only pay for the project, but to add extra money to the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund for the future so that it really is going to go beyond the scope of what the goals were when we established the perpetual care fund plan back in 1989. So we are, and as the current audit shows, we actually are $127,000 ahead of the goal for maintaining the level of perpetual care fund balance. So all the indicators are good. I stated the reasons why the cost of the bid were higher than originally budgeted or, you know, estimated, and there were certain few anomalies that came out of the final design phase, namely those listed here on page, page two of the report. The cost of actually staging and mobilizing became a greater concern because of the access, or limited access to the area, plus the impacts of US toll traffic and some overhead electric. The scope of the project increased, but only to the benefit that we will be able to service more people, more citizens, and provide a longer life to the cemetery. So we've gone from 70-some crypts to 88 crypts. So it was a challenging yet rewarding project, and we, we had a very active and effective cemetery task force involved with this, as well as the city council at various steps along the way. So there is economic feasibility to the project regardless of, of the construction cost, and certainly what we built into the example of what revenue may be and what rates may be established, certainly the cemetery board is going to review that, as well as the rules and regulations that need to be put in place before we can actually sell these new crypts as well as the niches. So we have drafted, we're about 90 percent done with the rules and regulations. This gives us a good foothold on establishing rates that are fair and equitable across the board for, for both projects combined, and certainly, you know, the city council can decide at a future meeting what they feel the balance and rate should be, and that'll, that'll come back city council after, after a while, after we get into the construction part of the project. We didn't want to establish rates before we did the construction, just in case, you know, we, we had second thoughts on where we wanted to allocate the costs. So with that, I could entertain any specific questions the council may have on any aspect of the expansion area. I will say, as I mentioned before, the expansion area is not a newly platted area. It was part of the plat for the hill. And the problem there was the grade and the slope, and so the city stopped short of developing those three divisions because of the slope, and you couldn't really maintain the stones and, and things, there would be difficult, you probably couldn't even dig graves there. But now we are to a point with the perpetual care fund that we have the money to finance the project, move ahead, and then get all that money back through not only sales of the lots, but through interments. And utilizing as many double crypts as possible will actually double the value to the perpetual care fund plan. So with that, I'd entertain any, any specific questions.
Any questions for Mr. Rubel? Mr. Rhodes?
Couple of three there, if I could. Well, the first one, I guess, is, is more of a statement, and that is, I'm, I'm really disappointed that all the money that we spent upfront did not identify some of these issues ahead of time. And if they had, I believe that we would have gotten a more accurate estimate of what our bid might have been before it came in. So, you know, if, if I had known where this was going the very first time we talked about it, I'm not sure that I would have voted to approve spending this kind of money to expand the cemetery. I understand that we're getting more spaces than we thought we would, but we're also spending some other monies. The other thing, we've got the 12 to 14 years to reimburse those investments that we're anticipating making now. Can you tell me what the current internment rate is and what the ratio is of cremations to full burial?
Well, the expansion area basically is not cremation unless one chooses to buy a vault for cremation, but the, the, the current rate is shown on the chart for the, it's $525 currently for crypt.
Not the dollar amount, I'm sorry, the number of?
Six per year. Six to seven per year in Division 70.
In burials.
In crypts, in the preneed crypts.
And we're, and we're putting in 88 of them, if I recall? Yeah, 88 crypts, some doubles. I suspect that our, our return on that investment is going to be further out than 12 to 14 years. I don't know what it's going to be, but I, I would guess it's going to exceed that number.
I don't know.
Can we talk a little bit about the pricing, what you, where you are preliminarily? Because I think, in some ways, it might have been helpful to have both of those at the table tonight, because I think, you know, the payback is, I mean, there is payback. This is not like a zero sum. So maybe, Mr. Rubel, if you want to talk about that, and maybe that we should have had that as part of this item.
Right.
At least a point of reference. So if you could maybe get some information about what, how you're going to price those, what you're looking at, what the market is.
Correct.
You know, et cetera, et cetera. Because I know you've been doing work on that so far.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The, the example of what rates might be after review and approval by the city council shown on the last attachment to the report, and it, on the top part, it shows the total program cost for, for both projects, the crypts and the niches together, because they are part of the same initiative. And then on the bottom, it shows proposed rates. And so in the green column, if you are just talking about the crypts at present, you can see the price of a single crypt is $3,000, and the price of a double crypt is $4,000. So currently, Division 70 is $3,200, but that is a rate, it's a rate established back in 2003, and we have not adjusted it. So what we're doing here is we're adjusting the remaining 24 crypt lots in Division 70, and that helps bring equity to, you know, the crypt situation in matter, or regardless of, of the division that it's, that they're installed. And then it sets the, the crypt rates at $3,000 and $4,000. And the value there, of course, is that it's, it's all of the, the design and the planning and all those related costs, plus the construction, and what it is, is that there's, the money there all sets the construction, and then some of the money goes into perpetual care. And we've, we've, we feel that that's a good starting point here, but certainly council can change those rates should they feel it's necessary, or they think it's too high or too low. We can, we can work with that and then show what the effect of that is against the, the project economics.
I'm confused, though. I'm not seeing that, you mentioned $3,000 is the current?
$3,200.
Yeah. I see, you're right, I see $3,200. I don't see $3,000.
No, it's $3,200.
The current, Division 70 is $3,200.
And that's proposed.
For a single, and this is for a double, $42.
All right, so we have no increase there.
Well, these are doubles.
These are doubles here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. All right. Our illustrious city clerk has pointed out to me the error of my ways.
Thank you.
I just wanted to also comment that...
Speak into the microphone, please.
Okay. I also wanted to comment that the number of interments in the crypt area, although it may seem low, we only have very few single spaces left, and the only options to purchase them and burial will be the crypt area.
So have people requested a space and not taken one because they couldn't get a single?
Pardon me?
You mentioned about all we had left were doubles.
We, yeah, we, well, we have the, we have the doubles left, but we have single spaces, very few of those left.
We've not turned anybody away at this point?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Har.
I'm sorry, I'm, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still confused about the pricing. Could you explain one more time?
Sure.
I'm still not clear about what's the current rate, what might be a future rate.
Okay. Currently, the double crypts that we have sell for $3,200. We're proposing for the new area, excuse me, the single crypt will go for $3,200, the double crypt will go for $4,200. Those remaining double crypts that we have in Division 70 will increase by $1,000 to $4,200, equal to the new ones.
And the price of the single crypt currently?
We have no single crypts currently.
Okay.
We have single lots, a burial lot, but a crypt has the vault already in the ground. That's the difference in the pricing.
Okay. Thank you.
Have we decided yet, has it been decided what percentage the perpetual care would be of the total cost? Has that been decided yet?
Yes. If you look at the program cost of $380,000, in the end, if you, you know, go through the scenario of just full utilization of the double crypts, although you some kind, there may be less interments, there might be more, there may be cremations added to them, anyway, we're looking at, the, the end result is $515,000 to the perpetual care fund, $88,000 to the general fund. So basically, you're, you're talking almost two to one.
Have they given any thought as to what they're going to invest that perpetual care money in?
It would be maintenance of the cemetery after it's...
Not able to be put into a mutual fund or something else?
Mr. Burgoyne does that?
No. It's put in investments that definitely return dollar on the dollar and have no risk of downside below $1 for your dollar that goes in. It's put in pooled funds, CDs, US Treasuries, things that definitely have a return of that dollar without risking the basis.
Mr. Girbert?
Just a couple of questions. If you could explain more why we only had one bid. I know recently we put out a project that had over 18 individuals apply to it, and this kind of has a concern for me that we only had one bid returned. And the other question, if you could explain more the component of the city administrative expense fee in this, the $42,450, the 15 percent is the overall project. Both of those questions, please.
Correct. We've, we've used the 15 percent admin as a standard figure when city staff, that includes many city staff, devote time into undertaking, you know, the meetings, the pre-planning. We draft up the RFPs for professional services, you know, and, and we draft all the reports. Then we have to do the inspection on these projects. We do basically all the accounting on the, on the projects for the purchase of materials and payment of contracts. And so, for instance, when we did the residential development projects, we use the 15 percent figure as administration. We've provided a lot of administration on developing the residential subdivisions, you know, and oversight of items being tested and inspected on site, you know, and so forth. So, you know, it's, it's virtually impossible to track our time on this because it's a little bit here, a little bit there, there's so many people involved. It's sort of a standard figure applied from basically experience that that should be the rate of return. Now, you, as city council, can change that. If you don't like the 15 percent, if you want to make it less or more, that can be, we can change the spreadsheet accordingly.
So you're looking at that anticipating about almost a half FTE for the whole year or duration of this part, of this project? I'm, I'm trying to figure out the dollar.
Yeah, we're talking...
About $42,000 or $50,000 to oversee those two projects in here. Trying to weigh that against what we would actually be considering an appropriate amount. So I'm not sure, sure 15 percent seems like something we want to charge the perpetual fund, but that's up to council. It seems a bit high.
Yeah. That money actually, even though you show it as a cost to the project, it, the reimbursement part of it is there also in the rates. So if you take 15 percent out of the expenses, you also take it out of the revenues, so, you know, it's, it's an offsetting thing.
Okay. But we're loaning, basically, taking money from the perpetual fund as it comes into the...
Yeah.
That's my only concern.
Yeah, right. We, we have not taken the $42,000 out of anything. Those are staff wages in our current departments. What we're doing is recognizing that we've devoted a lot of time in this, you know, from city manager and the city clerk and everybody...
If we're going to be recovering the costs through the fees, we're going to somehow have to advance money to do this, and we're going to be taking out the money out of the perpetual fund to pay for this. If we're not taking anything out, but we're going to recapture it over time, is that what you're saying?
Yes. The $42,000 for city administration has already been taken out of our individual payroll account.
But we'll recapture it, not upfront, but over the period of time, over the next 14 years or such?
No.
No, you were correct in the first place. It's taken out upfront and it's recovered over time.
Okay. I have a bit of a concern with that. I would, I would, the issue would, I'd rather see the city advancing the money instead of the perpetual fund advancing it.
Yeah. The, the 15 percent administration in the cost part is part of our daily effort. You know, it's already there. I mean, it just recognizes that we spend time on it.
Oh, no, I totally agree. I know that we did this type of thing, but my concern is, it sounds like, and if Lee's saying I'm correct on that aspect, that we're going to be moving the funds from the perpetual fund in advance of recovering it over the 14 years?
I don't know how we're going to bill for that. I'm, I'm not aware of that aspect. I, I thought we were just paying for the project. I'm not sure what this 15 percent is all about.
Well, it's, it's, it's not going to be an assessment to either the perpetual care fund or the general fund. It's only used to show that there's value in staff effort at a 15 percent rate to help you establish revenues that would help out both the perpetual care fund and the general fund.
No, that's fine, as long as all we're charging to the perpetual fund is $243,000.
Correct.
And we're going to be recovering through the fees and that, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're not advancing something out of perpetual fund back in it and then recapturing it over time. The other question, though, was about the bids, and if you could address that concern.
Okay. We, we've had situations before where there's only one bid, but then we do seek and talk to the other prospective bidders. At this point, there was only two others that showed any interest who actually picked up documents to bid it, and I talked to both of them. The one, as I noted in here, DePonyo, had gone a certain way into preparing a bid, and then because of their workload, and they had gotten like a $4 million contract in Saginaw for streets and water mains, had, had backed down, but Cliff Rhodes, their estimator, said that if they'd have submitted a bid, it would have been in the mid 200s, which means it would have been in the same range, it would have been about $250,000. The other bidder was ELS, and they had only gone about halfway. They had not obtained all kind, any, they had not obtained all their subcontractor cost. And what happens is, this is a very unique project, and Higgins is, is qualified, they did Division 70, they've done retaining walls, they, they are good at doing a lot of these unique type of projects. And since they're local and the bids were competitive, I look at it as being a good bid.
So the other, did the other individuals run out of time to submit a bid? Is that what you're saying?
No. No, they ran out of time, they just, it became too much of a, either a challenge or it didn't work out with their schedule. So, but they, I think the bids would have all been in this range.
I'm just concerned that we had that other bid with the park and with, related to the bridge and all that, and we were way over on that, and again, we're way over... to the bridge and all that, and we were way over on that, and again, we're way over on this. So there's some issue going on with either how we're engineering, like Mr. Rhodes stated, where there's, we've gotta look at something. This is the second one that's come in like this, and knowing this economy and knowing how many people are out there actually looking for jobs, I'm really surprised we didn't have additional ones-
Yeah.
-applying to this.
Yeah, I was disappointed, too, that more people weren't interested, but I think it's because it's, has so many unique challenges that there aren't a lot of contractors willing to take the risk and taking, uh, together or taking on, you know, a complex project, you know, at this location, you know. And Higgins certainly, you know, having performed a lot of work with the city, they, they have a, a sense of, of, uh, good real, you know, um, they have good relations with the city, they like to work with the city, you know, and they're, they've been good corporate citizens, too. And, uh, so, and they've always done good work.
Thanks. I would just wanna make sure what due diligence we did, because if we only have one bid, it's something that we just need to understand for the future. Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Girbaugh took my question regarding the number of bids, but, but I do have an additional one, not for Mr. Ruber, Ruble, excuse me, but for the city clerk. Clerk Hill, Mr. Ruble mentioned something about revising our policies and procedures and then referring that to the Cemetery Board of Appeals and then discharging it to, to city council. Just wanna confirm that we're in the process of doing that and, and ask you to maybe address the, the timeline going forward as to when you think Cemetery Boards of Appeals would be meeting and, and when it would be brought before council for either approv- either approval or rejection.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Ruble has worked extensively on our rules and regulations, and I have those on my desk and have been reviewing those, and like he said, we're about ninety percent done. Um, I hope to have my draft back to him tomorrow. We will be taking our proposal to the Cemetery Board of Appeals to review what we have proposed. We will also look at costs, um, of other communities and what they charge for rates, and we'll do our due diligence on that, and we hope to bring that back in November.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion, Mr. Rhodes.
Um, it does appear, given the time that we have here and the comments back from Higgins, that this whole project might not start until next spring anyway. Um, and following up on Councilmember Girbaugh's comments, I, I wonder if, if that doesn't provide us an opportunity to go back and look at the RFP, the Request for, for Proposals, and see if there's something in there that is making it difficult for people to bid or running up costs. Uh, no, like, like Councilmember Girbaugh, it's hard for me to understand that we would only get one bid in this economy when all these contractors are running around trying to find something to do. There, there's, there's gotta be something in the process that is getting in the way. And since we appear to have time, I'd, I'd like to, uh, explore that and see if we couldn't improve the process and then maybe go back out for bid.
Mr. Ruble, do you have any comments on that?
Um, well, I mean, the, the project was advertised on the three large bulletin boards for the state, Construction Association Michigan, Dodge Reports, and Camp, uh, Construction CNS, which covers a very large, large area in the state of Michigan and also, I think, northern Ohio. So certainly, they, there was a month there, at least a month, that it was out there. And I think the, the situation here is that it's, it's very unique, and contractors out there, uh, the normal project for them is streets, water mains, you know, and, and the like, and not putting in cemetery vaults with retaining walls. It's sort of a, a unique type of a project. I don't think bidding it over is going to get you any, any better results.
I'd like to, at least, you know, have the opportunity for you or somebody else perhaps to review the, the RFP that went out and see if there's something in there that is making it difficult or making contractors reluctant to bid on it.
Well, the, uh, the people that picked up-
You know, Higgins is, is definitely qualified to do it, I don't have any question about that.
Yeah, there was, like I say, there was two other people who were, who had intended to work on the bid, there were others who looked at it, and none of them posed any type of question that would indicate that it, that they didn't understand what the work was or that there was something in there that, uh, you know, was, was questionable as far as design. You know, no, nobody indicated that there was a problem with the documents or the plans.
No, in my experience in these kind of projects, uh, most contractors would not indicate that, they would just walk away from it and decline the bid. Um, so, I don't know, anyway, I'm kinda beating a dead horse here.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just add, I mean, we certainly can do that, uh, if, if council wants to do that, but, but just as we, we may get different, better numbers, we also run the risk of getting higher numbers, too, especially once someone has, a bidder's already put it, their number out there, when you have to rebid. Um, it makes it actually a little more difficult sometimes for them to bid a second time because their number's already there and the other bidders know what they are, so it makes them a little, but again, we can certainly do that, but like I said, we certainly could get more bidders, um, and better numbers, or we could get the same amount or, or, or some more bidders and have higher numbers, too, so, those are just things to consider.
Well, the other thing is, you may get someone in with a really low bid and then find out they're not capable, like, like contractor that has done it before. I mean, if you just automatically give it to a low bidder regardless, then you also have to live with the situation that maybe he underbid it and really, you may not get good results. At least here, we know we got a good contractor and we'll get good results, and that's probably worth something.
Given it to just a lower bidder 'cause of the lowest, but if that were the case and there were a little bid and they weren't qualified, you would eliminate them in your review.
It's not that, it's not easy to go that route.
I don't know, it seems to me, I mean, if there, you had numbers that came in, I mean, Higgins did the last project, and obviously, they bid on that, and, um, they are a local business, so I think it's fine to move forward this way, but I mean, I'm not hearing from the rest of the council, so, I mean, right now, we have a motion to authorize, so, further discussion. Mr. Girbaugh.
Clarification again, it said, you know, in your comments, you said about eighteen percent of it was related to the additional crypt spaces, so that's about eighteen thousand dollars considering, you know, a hundred thousand dollars additional over what we had. What was the other seventy-two thousand dollars tied up into? The wall, the retaining wall?
The, uh, the breakdown is on page two.
Right, I see page two, but I don't know what the difference is from what we, that we originally submitted, so I missed it. Because you, you were saying we were looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, now we're up at two hundred and forty-three thousand, of it, eighteen thousand dollars is crypt. The other component is all in the retaining wall, or?
No, it's, well, it's the fence, retain wall, the, uh, the fact that we, to avoid blocking off part of U.S. Twelve and over extended time-
A temporary road.
-which M.D. would not allow, is the fact that we have to build a temporary access and maintain that from the Curtis Park Drive, and so we have a temporary, we had to build, put in temporary access for mobilization as well as delivery and, and placement of the crypts in a safe, safe manner.
So how much was that, so how much is that temporary drive in addition to what we originally had done?
That temporary drive is in the thirty-nine thousand, uh, five hundred figure that's within that, but there's also other excavation within that for the, for the wall and the crypt area.
For me, I'm just trying to figure out where this additional cost is, and it's sounding like we have to do this because of the high tension lines, or, I mean, the power lines as you come off of Michigan Avenue are an issue for equipment, is that what you were saying?
Right, then they have to do it, you know, they have to do different, they have to do separate setups, one on the east side of the power line, then they probably have to do a whole, another setup on the west side of the power line in order to avoid the power line.
So where will they be coming in from Curtis Park?
Curtis Park Drive, right at the sidewalk.
Right at the sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, the, part of the reason why the bid is two forty-three versus than earlier, the budget figure was pre-designed, prior to any knowledge, any surveying, anything, it's just basically a glance at what it might take. And so, it was just a guess, the hundred and fifty thousand was a budget guess. And between that time, which was over a year or half ago, we, we could see that the estimates were gonna be higher, but of course, we didn't adjust the budget when we were not sure what the es- estimates were going to be, because at that point, we hadn't finished the design. So it would've just slowly crept up based on the component cost coming in from the, from our design in, engineer. And so, you know, we gave it a good shot at a hundred and fifty thousand, later on, we saw it was gonna be a hundred and eighty thousand, but then again, that was with seventy, around seventy or seventy-two crypts, not knowing we can actually get eighty-eight crypts in there. So the value and the extra cost is actually gonna be-
Right, I don't have any addition, I don't have any problem with the increase in the cost related to the additional crypts, I'm just trying to understand what we're doing and making sure that what we've got, so we don't have something coming forward again that takes another bigger hit on it, on the perpetual fund, so.
Mr. Girbaugh.
Um, thank you. Um, this question, either for Mr. Ruble or possibly Mr. Burgoyne, um, are there any problems, um, potential problems related to pulling this much money out of the perpetual care fund, um, for the period until it's replenished? Are there any, any consequences of that we should be aware of?
Mr. Burgoyne.
No, um, and I also was in error on the, uh, on the percentage, the fifteen percent city administration, that is just a, an aside, that is not something that's paid towards the project, it's not taken from the perpetual care fund, it's just an approximate amount of city staff and overhead time devoted to the project, it's not paid out for the project.
Right.
Further discussion on the motion? Okay, so we currently have a motion to authorize, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item New Business eleven, one fifty-seven, this is a request to waive tax penalty on estate of Irma Percola, six-two-six Echo Court, this is a motion acknowledged, received on September eighth, twenty-eleven, a letter from Gary Percola and a September nineteen, twenty-eleven memo from City Treasurer Mickey Joe Bennett.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second. Move moral, second. Terhar. All in favor, say, oh, discussion, sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
This is just to acknowledge receipt.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Okay, um, and we have a motion to grant or deny the request of Gary Percola for a waiver of the eighty-six dollar, ninety-eight cent penalty on a late payment of taxes for six-two-six Echo Court.
I would move to grant.
A motion by Mr. Rhodes, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. I will be voting against this because we, um, historically don't waive, waive penalties and interest on late payments. We open this door, there could be quite a flood of requests, so we all have contributing circumstances in our lives, and I know this is a difficult circumstance, but I personally will not be voting in favor of this. Is there further discussion on this motion? All in favor to grant the, I'm sorry, Mr. Rhodes.
I was just gonna comment that his request clearly states that he is not asking for a refund of the interest, only the penalty.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
I would, I would think if, if something is, is chronic or this is a repeat pattern, then it'd be different, but I think all of us at one time or another have been late on a payment, and I think circumstances that occur, that, that's easy to do, and that's happened in my life, so.
Further discussion? Mr. Har.
Um, is there any precedent, um, in past cases for-
Mr. Campbell.
-doing this?
Um, I, as far as a legal opinion, I'd refer to Mr. Grossman, but that is certainly a concern, that if we do allow, um, and while they're each judged on their own merits, um, it certainly makes it harder to deny if we have, uh, made that exception.
Thank you.
Um, I, are treasurers here, have we ever waived a penalty in, in the past upon request?
Um, further discussion? Mr. Girbaugh.
And that's the reason why I've always done that, because past history, we've not waived it, because even though I know there's considerations for everything, that's been a concern from when there was problems with the mailings, problems with people getting them in the mailbox versus getting them into the drop box, there's just been so many different things that it's not a huge amount, but it's become such a problem that we would have to be refunding everyone, and it just doesn't work.
Is there further discussion on this motion? The motion currently is to grant the request for a waiver of the eighty-six dollar penalty. No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
No?
No.
Motion does not pass.
Yes, it does. There's four. No.
Right. Doesn't pass.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Did you get the votes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, and I was pointing, sorry, I was, it was pointed out to me by our clerk that I skipped right past, our other unfinished item, business, that was on our counter, which is eleven, one oh nine, South Mill County White Transit Board, selection of representative, this is a motion acknowledged, received on October third, twenty-eleven, communication from Terry Blackmore, to prove or not approve the appointment of Bill Lavery as the South Mill Representative to the County White Transit Board, that was on our counter tonight. Again, the group met this morning, which is why it was not in your packet over the weekend. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move Rhodes, second. Moral. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, one fifty-eight, request to waive tax penalty, Brecken Retail LLC here at the Oaks, this is a motion acknowledged, received on September twenty-second, twenty-eleven letter from Bayless Sipos, manager of Reinhardt Commercial, and the September twenty-seventh, twenty-eleven memo from City Treasurer Mickey Joe Bennett.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second.
Moral, second. Girbaugh. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? carries. Do we have a motion to grant or deny the request of Bayless Sipos for waiver of the two thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars, seventy-eight cent penalty on a late payment of taxes for the Oaks?
Move to deny.
Second.
Rhodes, second. Girbaugh. Discussion? Mr. Peter.
Just to repeat myself, I think if it was chronic or a repeat offense, uh, it'd be different, but if you miss it one time, that, we should give a grace.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes.
I was wanting to mention, I took a different position on this, this particular one than I did from the last one, because this is a, an organization that's run as a business, and, um, while the gentleman did make a mistake, he's, uh, he's paid to do these things properly, and, um, so I don't see any reason to even consider forgiving that penalty.
Okay, further discussion on the motion? All in favor, the motion is to deny, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item eleven, one fifty-nine, Washington County Annual Property Tax for Roads, point-six mills, this is a motion acknowledged, received on September twenty-ninth, twenty-eleven memo from City Manager Campbell, and a twenty-twelve County Wide Millage Projects Plan from the Washington County Road Commission indicating the county's intent to levy a point-six county-wide road millage, the city, uh, the slain city council supports or does not support the levy of this point-six county-wide road millage.
I'll move to acknowledge the receipt of the memo.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Campbell, you wanna talk, talk about it?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the Public Act two eighty-three millage, as I refer to it as, um, apparently, it's been on the books, on the, the state books, if you will, as far as a law, since nineteen oh nine, and throughout the years, managing, some countries have utilized it, I guess the last time the Washington County utilized this was back in the nineteen seventies. I'm not aware that there are any, I'm not aware if there are or not counties currently utilizing this as a revenue generator, but it's similar, you may recall, I think, a meeting or two ago referenced the Public Act eighty-eight millage, it's a non-voted as far as it doesn't be, it's not put on the ballot for the residents to vote on, um, this is similar, um, and this is for infrastructure that is existing, so it's not for new infrastructure, um, roads, um, uh, culverts and those, those types of things, it's for existing maintenance, so not, not new ones. Um, this, essentially, the Washington- This essentially, the Washington County Road Commission provides a report, or a proposal, if you will, a report to the Washington County Board of Commissioners for, for their consideration. And if, if the, well, the Board of Commissioners can approve it in part or in whole, or deny it in part or in whole. And if they deny it, then they're able, they are able to actually to put forth their own project, if you will, a list of projects and how those might be funded. But this is a funding source, point-six mils, approximately sixty dollars on a residential home that's true cash value of two hundred thousand dollars. About, with their, with their current taxable value here in Celine would raise approximately two hundred forty thousand dollars. So we had discussed with them possible projects in or around Celine. And we talked about, and on the, the map that provided, the original map, they were talking about doing portions of Bemis and Austin that are in the city. But, but we talked about further projects. And we have, of course, Woodland coming up next year. And that would free up some additional monies that we currently are allocated for that project. We could free that up and use it on some other street projects that are in dire need here in the city, too. But again, it is, it is a millage that is voted on by the County Board of Commissioners. It does not go on the ballot. Happy to answer any questions. And this, if I may also, this is an annual item. So they, if they, if they do, for instance, if they were, if they did vote it through this year, then it would come back again next year for consideration.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Girba?
I guess I've heard some other discussions of how this was approached in some of the other townships and how they supported it, but not with the planning commission, I mean, the road commission doing the, just putting the bed, the millage on. They would rather see it go to a vote, just someone would like things I've done in the past where it would be a vote of the people. So I'm just trying to get feedback and understanding why someone would want to go that route. I know it's the idea that individuals really don't like seeing bodies drop, add on taxes. So I'm just wondering if we could do something to that. Well, I don't have a problem with them going for it. I just don't think they should be adding it on as just an automatic...
Well, the problem is that there's the transportation system's woefully underfunded. And if this passed in the county, we would actually have some money. We're actually going to be running up against, budding up against our bond that we, you know, we have a bond out there for road infrastructure. And we're one year out from, and we have some really, I mean, our road system has actually deteriorated some. So we, this is on our list in the next couple of years to identify a funding source for any additional investment. So this would actually help the city.
And that's kind of where I'm concerned, is if we have to float a millage for roads here, then this is added on, this is adding for some streets, but...
Well, it's just for this year, number one.
For this year only, right. But it could be renewed next year and the year after that, so...
It would come in front of us, then. Further discussion? Mr. Rhodes?
We have talked for the last couple of years about the horrible condition of our, of our roads and highways and byways. And they're just getting worse as time goes on. I, I believe that I could consider supporting this millage if we had an agreement in writing that they were, in fact, going to apply the amount that would be generated by the city of Celine to the Woodland Drive project. I understand you all have had some discussion and there, so there's an intention to, but things change over time. And I, I'd be a lot more comfortable if we could have a document that said that we are, in fact, going to get that money spent within our city.
Well, they can't say that until it passes the county, because basically the county can change.
Right.
So, Mr. Campbell, if you have any comments today?
The only, they could, again, the, our, my understanding is that they were going to be amending their proposed project list, which again had the Bemis and Austin, and they were going to replace that with the Woodland Drive project. So that, that would be, I mean, that would be the approved project list. But, but again, until that would be passed, I'm not sure that they would. I don't know, we didn't approach the subject with them, so...
You know, an indication in, in writing, more than an indication, a document in writing, it says that if it passes, the amount of monies that are collected based on Celine property values would be expended toward Woodland Drive. And that way, it's only a commitment if it passes by the county.
Mr. Morel?
Thank you, Mayor. I will support a motion to acknowledge receipt, but I will not be supporting this evening a motion to endorse the zero-point-six county-wide road millage. I expressed some concern to Mr. Campbell prior to the meeting that I thought the materials that were provided to us by Washington County and the Road Commission were grossly inadequate. There's no background information here whatsoever. It's simply two maps of the proposed project areas. In addition to that, I share some of Mr. Girba's concerns about this being voted by the Board of Commissioners and not by the public at large. And then finally, I think it's, it's, it's a little bit of political theater. The county doesn't need us to endorse the proposal. They're just really, I think, soliciting some political cover from us. So obviously, in, in principle, in theory, I'm very enthusiastic, very supportive of allocating more dollars to our roads and infrastructure. But as it pertains to, again, if, if there's a motion offered to support the zero-point-six county-wide road millage, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Further discussion? Well, I would just make one statement that we've been talking for how many years about the fact that we are underfunding in our road system and we do not currently have a road millage. We absorb it in the general fund. So what this would be doing is adding two hundred forty thousand dollars to our general fund to put into the road structure. But if this council does not want to spend that money, then that's fine. But those roads will be continuing to deteriorate and they will continue to cost money. So, Mr. Rhodes?
The, the one downside to the city of not supporting this is that the county commissioners may very well pass it anyway. And then the two hundred and forty thousand, or whatever that number is, will be spent elsewhere outside the city. The only way, as I understand it, they're going to get that money committed to the city is if we support it. So there's a big downside risk to this.
Mr. Girba?
So we're saying that if we support this, we're guaranteed that two hundred forty thousand dollars within the cities?
That's what we agreed to.
Or they could change, we agreed to.
Yeah, that's part of my concern.
We can make the motion subject to that, that we support this based on that it goes to Woodland Road. And that would be the motion. And that's very clear what the, you know, for those of you that are considering supporting it, so...
Yeah, if the tax dollars come back to us for our use on our roads...
Right, that's the agreement.
I'd be fine. Because that's my concern is that the planning commissioner could change their mind and just say, we're not going to be able to do that this year.
Just for clarification, too, it's, it'll be based on our taxable value. So currently, the current taxable value is approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That's fine.
I just want to make sure that if it's something less, based on a, a somewhat, a little bit smaller taxable value, that, that wouldn't cause a...
Just one other question? And they see Woodland as a county road? There's not an issue with being a county road?
It's a, no, it's infrastructure within the county. It doesn't have to be under, it doesn't have to be under county jurisdiction.
You're doing Ann Arbor, a project in Ann Arbor.
Well, I know, but I'm thinking, well, Celine and Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor Street's just as bad. But I didn't know if that was more of a, you know, a primary route versus what Woodland was. So I'm fine with it. I just wanted to make sure that's a clarification, that they couldn't back off on that.
Well, it has to be done this next year. So it had to be a project that we have...
In the, in the works. Okay, thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Tahr?
Yeah, I would, I would be willing to support, to vote to support the, the millage only if we specify that the funds would be expended in Celine. I'm not comfortable with the more general language as it exists now.
Further discussion?
Mr. Morel?
I think this is a question for Mr. Campbell or, or for the mayor. What's the time, timeline moving forward? How, how quickly does the county need to receive word from us in terms of whether we're going to support this or whether we're not? Is there any indication given?
I'm not, I know some, one of the meetings in October, that's when I believe that the County Board of Commissioners are going to consider it, is my understanding. I don't have a specific date. I, you know, I'm, I guess...
They're doing their budget, so it's going to have to be in the next month, because it's for projects for next year.
Okay. I'm more amenable to a motion if there is very specific, very emphatic language, which would indicate that dollars would be spent in Celine, in the city of Celine. I, again, am pretty disappointed that the county gave us two maps of proposed projects. And that was the entire background information that we received for this proposal. And I'm not saying that to bemoan or begrudge anybody on staff. Mr. Campbell provided a fine memo, and it's not his responsibility to provide background. But if the, the County Board of Commissioners or Road Commission is asking us to support, you know, a zero-point-six millage, an additional millage on the tax rolls, which is going to be impacting people during a pretty difficult economic period, I, I thought we would, ought to have received some, some background information that, that outlined the intent of this proposal and why it's being brought forward at this time.
Okay, further discussion on the motion to acknowledge receipt? Okay. So we have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September twenty-ninth memo and the twenty-twelve millage projects plans. All in favor to acknowledge receipt, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The second motion would be that the city, Celine City Council supports or does not support the levy of this point-six county-wide road millage with the city portion, which is currently estimated at two hundred forty thousand dollars, expended on the Woodland Road project in this next year, something, I don't know. It just has to be this next year. You want to change the wording or...
I would just say may reference taxable, based on taxable value.
Okay. So how do you want to say this? With the city portion?
Compared to the county's taxable value.
So the city portion of the county taxable value?
Yes. That the revenues are shared in that proportion.
Can you, you want to say it? I wrote with the city portion of the county taxable value...
That, that the revenues received from this billage be shared with Celine in proportion, as the proportion of Celine's taxable value is in proportion to the county taxable value.
That's too much.
Oh, okay.
What is... Okay. So with the, the revenue, the city's revenue portion of the county taxable value, does that...
That, that Celine get its share based on taxable value would be short.
So with the, with the city's revenue portion of the county taxable value, which is currently estimated at approximately two hundred forty thousand dollars, be expended on a Woodland Road project?
I, I would leave the two hundred forty thousand out completely. That may not be a good figure and that...
It could penalize us the other way, too.
What?
It could penalize us the other way, too, if it was more, so...
Okay. So do we have, does everybody understand the motion?
We could state that an amount equal to the revenue generated from the city of Celine be expended on Woodland Drive reconstruction.
From the city of Celine's taxable value?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a mover?
Some over. Support.
Did you just...
Rhodes.
Right. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second? Does everybody understand what the motion is saying?
Mr. Tahr?
Could you repeat it, please?
That the Celine City Council supports the levy of this point-six county-wide road millage with the city portion, city revenue portion of the county value expended on the Woodland Road project, spent, contribute, contributed to the... One of those words. Which one?
The expended.
The expended. Okay. Sorry, I had a late flight last night, so... Discussion? Mr. Girba, do you have any discussion?
No, I support this motion that way.
Mr. Peters?
Oh, it's a good idea.
Mr. Morel?
Well, I've been flopping around like a tuna fish on this issue, I guess. I guess with some hesitation and regret, I will support it, because I do understand that there's an overwhelming public need to reinvest dollars in, in our infrastructure. And I appreciate that there's now a language in this motion which gears those dollars back to the city. But again, I, I will emphatically state that the next time any entity comes to us with a request, especially a request that is, is fairly controversial in its nature, they ought to do us the justice of providing as much background information as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes, do you have any discussion?
No, ma'am.
No? We're done? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven one sixty, stipulations for settlement, Automotive Component Holdings LLC. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September twenty-eighth, twenty-eleven memo from City Assessor Catherine Skoll and the proposed stipulations for settlement for Automotive Component Holdings LLC versus city of Celine, MTT docket number zero-three-six-six-eight-seven-two and MTT docket number zero-three-nine-two-four-five-six. To approve or not approve the stipulation for settlement for docket number zero-three-six-six-eight-seven-two, resulting in a decrease in taxable value, SEV, of eight million five hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars for two thousand nine, decrease in taxable value, SEV, of eight million twenty-one thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars for two thousand ten, and a decrease in taxable value, SEV, of eight million one hundred seventy-eight thousand two hundred sixteen dollars for two thousand eleven, resulting in an approximate refund of city taxes of three hundred seventy-six thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars. To approve or not approve the stipulation for settlement for docket number zero-three-nine-two-four-five-six, resulting in a decrease in taxable value, SEV, of two hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred forty-four dollars for two thousand ten, and a decrease in taxable value, SEV, of five million eighteen thousand two hundred two dollars for two thousand eleven, resulting in an approximate refund of city taxes of forty thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars. To authorize or not authorize the city attorney to sign the stipulations as required.
I'd like to move the first portion of this to acknowledge receipt only so that we can have some discussion on it before we vote.
We have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo. We have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Ms. Skoll, how are you tonight?
Thank you. This is a complicated, very detailed spreadsheet that I provided here. We've worked, I have worked a long time with ACH to come to an agreement on these appeals that are reaching their hearing schedule with the tax tribunal. So we had some deadline requirements. We've worked back and forth many times. As some of you may be aware, the State Tax Commission had implemented new personal property multipliers for some manufacturing equipment. And basically, that was an impact of a decrease of forty percent on the, on the personal property of, of ACH. We had reached a settlement with ACH in two thousand six and two thousand eight, which actually reduced the personal property to twenty-three percent. The multiplier changes came forward in two thousand ten by the State Tax Commission that would have reduced it, again, as I said, forty percent. reduced it, again, as I said, 40%. We were able to reach an agreement with ACH whereby they were willing to accept a decrease of 22% on the city's side. I feel quite certain that if we were to go to the tax tribunal on this, that we could be held to the 40%. So I, I feel that it is in our best interest, albeit it's a lot of money, to, to reduce the 22%. I think that compared to other communities, this, this is really the best that we're going to do. I am privy to where other communities are in the same situation, and, and it may not be so, so good. So I feel that we've been fortunate to work this out. If, certainly if we were going to go to the tax tribunal, there's no guarantee at all how the tribunal judges would decide. And we could be forced into that 40% reduction on all of the personal property, along with the costs of getting there. This, so this, this actually is two docket numbers before you. The first, the first docket included four parcel numbers from 2009. Then we have three other parcel numbers in 2010. I mentioned that we had applied a 22% reduction on the personal property to reach this settlement. But if you actually look at the spreadsheet, you'll see that the numbers are not consistent across the board, that they do vary. And in fact, a couple of the parcel numbers are going up. This is because in the process of going back and forth several times, we found errors in some of what ACH had reported or omitted property, movement amongst tables. In any case, just looking at it so many times, we were able to determine that there were some of the parcel numbers that needed to be corrected upwards. So it's, it's actually less than the 22% reduction because we're increasing some of the, the basis values on those parcels. This also represents a decrease on the real parcel. And just like with the personal property, we are in touch with what other communities, how they have their ACH plants assessed per square foot. This settlement is in keeping with where Mylan and Ypsilanti Township are. We also have an IFT on the real property, which is not being appealed, so that that amount is out there as well. It's not part of the appeal, so it actually, if you, you really would have to look at both the add valorem parcel and the IFT parcel combined to look, to determine the total dollar amount per square foot. And I think if you look at that, I feel confident that it's, it's at a, a value that is not compromising the city over much, even though I know these are very large dollar amounts. The plant is over 1.5 million square feet. We have a large amount of personal property there. I, we've, we've budgeted for this. At this point, I'll be quiet and listen for questions.
Okay, we did, is this total amount in escrow for the liability?
Yes.
So we're totally, we have this set aside, right?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
That was one of the questions I was going to ask, is if we had enough set aside to cover this. And the second had to do with the tax abatements that we've given to this organization over the years. Do those abatements dollars, do they decrease at the same ratio that we decrease the valuation? Or do they continue to abate a fixed dollar amount?
The abatement is equal to a half tax rate, so we're reducing the value. The tax rate would not change.
Any other questions? Thank you, I know you've worked, I mean, this has been, how long have you been working on this now?
Four years.
So I'm sure in some ways you're relieved, and I guess one question I was sort of thinking while you were talking is, you know, if this MOU goes through, is, can they go back to this once it goes through the tax tribunal? Can Forsia come back and do a, do you know? I mean, I don't, I don't want to give you a headache or an ulcer, but I was just while you were talking, I'm thinking.
Sure. This would settle for 2009, 10, and 11. And of course, where we would go forward into 2012, we, we have to, we would have to work with the 2011 or the most recent year as basis going forward. There can be no promises, I guess, on their part or ours as far as going forward. It would be nice to have a good working relationship going forward and to keep the values where they are going forward. I guess we can all hope for that.
That's a good answer. Okay, thanks a lot, Ms. Skoll. Is there further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Oh, right, that was to acknowledge receipt. Thank you. Now we need a motion to approve all that stuff that I read before.
With some regret, I would move to approve, approve, and authorize.
We have a motion by Morrow. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second to her. Discussion. I guess this will affect our percentage, that 19% of personal property tax revenue is going to go down a little bit, right?
It was just over 20, and I think it'll be around 17 or 18.
Still a significant portion for this state to talk about eliminating. Okay, further discussion on this motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you again for your work, Ms. Skoll. I know this was, you spent a lot of time, and it was incredibly detailed and time-consuming. So thank you for your work on that project and the positive outcome. I know that was a lot due to your patience and due diligence. We have item 11-152, which is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 27, 2011 memo from Finance Director Burgoyne regarding reporting of the EVIP information to Department of Treasury to file. Actually, I think it's going to be more than filed, but we have a motion?
Move.
Move Girba?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Girba, second, Rhodes. Discussion.
I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Burgoyne and Mr. Campbell's work on this because this is one of the main components of our getting our revenue, and that I think this information provides clearly some, some easier way to view our city is how we've done. And you can see where revenues have gone down, and we've adjusted expenses and such, and that the access for this should be really acknowledged out there for individuals to see this information on our city website. And that we also have it in our municipal lobby. But the idea of this dashboard, I think, and if Mr. Burgoyne and Mr. Campbell don't mention it, provides a real quick view of looking at where we stand from last year to go ahead to this year, and where we've been up and down, and where we can even look for areas of improvement. Couple areas I think will be quite eye-opening for a couple individuals. I think, again, when we look into our pension liabilities and our retiree healthcare funding status, when you look at actuals to the potential liability, those are areas where I think we'll need to continue to focus ourselves on. And this is a good start. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Do we have any Commissioner Committee reports? Mr. Rhodes?
Environmental Commission. That group met on September 21st, and the BP, the proposed BP site plan was, was brought to us for comment. And we did review it, and the owner was there, as well as our Gary Rubel was in attendance. And it became fairly obvious, pretty quickly as we were working through it, that the environmental checklist that had been provided to us was not really designed to address the kinds of potential issues that the Environmental Commission might have on a local basis. It was more designed to present information to the applicant as to where they needed to go for various approvals and licenses. And so the Environmental Commission did not have any specific comments at that point in time, other than to request that as it became more developed and got closer to the final site plan, that we have an opportunity to review it again. And we also decided that we, the Environmental Commission, would work with Mr. Rubel to develop a environmental checklist that would more closely relate to our local issues that we would like to have an opportunity to comment on in the future for other projects. And then on September 24th, that's Saturday, at the Harvest of the Arts event, we had a park, Parking Day display, which received a fair number of comments because one of the things that was different about it is that it had real grass down on the road. And a lot of folks wondered about that, but it worked out fairly well. The sod was donated by the gentleman who owns Instalon down in Mylan, and we thanked him profusely for that. And we also had a fair number of handouts that were given out, was staffed by various members of the Environmental Commission throughout the day. There was a demonstration of the rain barrels that we have for sale because some people had not actually looked at one, other than just to see a picture. And many of them were really surprised at the volume of water that would actually come out of the bottom of just one rain barrel. And so I think we sold a few of them that day. There was also a, Marcia Valer, one of our, one of our members took some used cardboard tubes and used them to assemble a, a little table with. So again, just to demonstrate the fact that some of the things that we routinely throw away don't need to be, they can, with a little bit of imagination and effort, be used for something more useful. And then the last thing, the Environmental Commission, I just wanted to mention again that we are co-sponsoring the electronic waste recycle event on November the 5th. That's a Saturday, be from 9 to 11. No charge to those people who wish to bring electronic things that they no longer need to that recycle event, and you do not have to be a resident of the city of Celine. As long as you're willing to drive from wherever you live and bring those items to us, we'll be happy to take them. And that's my report on the Environmental Commission.
Are there any other Commissioner Committee reports? If not, we have reports and other announcements.
I guess I would just say, on your counter tonight, there's a book that the league just republished. For those of you that participate in our strategic planning last year, our goals and objectives, we refer to our, in our document, about the 21st century assets for successful community, excuse me, I'm really having a hard time, like, the community assets required for, in the 21st century to be successful. And this book does a very nice, in-depth job with national experts from around the country that speak to those assets that we have sort of given an overview to. And so I asked Todd to make sure that everybody gets a copy, and if you could, I'll try to read that. We do have our strategic planning session coming up in November. The date should be on the cover of the books. And I think it will be really helpful to align that, you know, the people that they have writing the articles are national experts in these areas, and I think they'll help stimulate some thought as to what we are doing well, where we have room for improvement. And also, I know that we're gonna have the department heads read the book and sort of, sort of update our culture. And we also have two books for our two other people that I believe are in the audience, Jim Roth and John Heller, they're also running for office, so that we all can have a common conversation and some, no sharing of the mind about what makes a successful place. And I found it a great book, and I think you'll all enjoy it. It's a good read, and very stimulating, but interesting at the same time. So hopefully you get a chance to read that before, I think, what's the date, in November?
19th.
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 Okay, so that's like a month. That gives you guys a lot of time, because it's actually not a very, it's, the chapters aren't too bad. But, you know, we are doing, you know, slowly but surely moving into some of that. So especially for the newer council members that weren't at our last planning session, I think you'll find it really helpful. And I think, any other reports and announcements?
I had, I had three items that I wanted to bring up really quickly under this general category. And the first was, some of you may not know, but I've, I've been a member of the Michigan Municipal League Economic Development and Land Use Committee for about three years now. And we had a meeting on the 26th. And that committee typically will look at different bills that have been introduced by either the State House or Senate, and offer comments on them, either to modify, oppose, or support those bills. And there were 10 of them that we reviewed this last time that we met. And if some of you want more information about that, I'd be happy to pass it on to you later. The second item is that I'd like for us to begin to have some dialogue about whether or not there is a way to use our remaining ADC funds, which as I understand, it will expire in August of 2013, there's a way to use those funds to generate more funds after they actually expire, as opposed to expending them in their entirety as, as time goes by. And I don't know if there is, but I'd like to have some dialogue about that possibility. And the third item is that I'd like to suggest that we name our portable ice rink after Councilmember Glenn Law, since we probably wouldn't have it if it wasn't for his persistence in pushing us forward with it. So I think it'd be a nice way to, to thank him for his, his efforts on behalf of the city. That's it.
Mr. Herr?
This coming Tuesday, October 11th, we will be welcoming visitors from our sister city, Breckin, Wales. They'll be here for two weeks, and I hope everyone will be welcoming to them when it, at any opportunity that you have to see them. Thank you.
I actually realized, I'm used to Mr. Law being here to cover the Planning Commission. We met last week, and actually, we had a joint Planning Commission, City Council meeting to talk about, well, it wasn't, it was a Planning Commission meeting that council attended to talk about the Celine area sustainability circles work and the direction on moving forward on a regional plan, and sort of get everybody on the same page around a regional master plan. So that was, some of the council members were able to make it, and some weren't, but I think it was informative for all involved. And that Doug Luhan, who's our city planner, and has also worked with Pittsfield, and actually, he's working with the majority of townships at this point, so it's great because he's getting really familiar with our region, is presenting on behalf of the Sustainability Circle to all the township, Planning Commissions and Boards, so to make sure that there is interest and leadership in moving forward with this. So we'll be reporting back after, I think there's, all the presentations are done. Is there any other reports and announcements? If not, public comment or the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who'd like to speak is requested, if not required, to state his or your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I would like to ask that Channel 18, I think we put about $70,000 of city funds into that with the schools. I'd like to see us have a candidates' night for not only our city council, but our school board members. We have the two appointed council members, I noticed, on the celine.com, but we have nothing as far as our candidates. And I think it would be a nice thing to have that on our local channel, which is information. Let's see, we've got $380,000 in the cemetery, taken out of the cemetery perpetual care fund for the one project, and probably at least $120,000 for the other, $500,000, that's a half a million dollars. So we got $499,000 we can go through. The other thing is, I noticed the city administration, 15%, Mr. Rubel did say reimbursed general fund. And Mr. Girba asked Mr. Burgoyne, and Mr. Burgoyne said those costs would not be coming out. So in the information, it does say reimbursed general fund for staff time, and that's $50,000. So I just want to point that out. The other thing, as far as our highway funds, I think, it's my understanding, Michigan has the highest load limit of the United States. And I think that's something that maybe we ought to work with Michigan Municipal League as far as lowering the load limit. Thank you very much, Mr. Rhodes, for trying to postpone. Your expertise is in building, and we all have strengths and we all have weaknesses. And I appreciate that you tried to ask for this. to ask for this to be put off until the spring for the bid to be done again. And I'm disappointed that this is being done and the cost is very high. Also, as far as the over, as far as the request to waive penalties, I was on council for years, we heard all kinds of stories. And the council chose not to waive penalties because it was hard on our staff, because then we get selective over what we think is a good story or occurrence and what has happened, opposed to what we didn't really feel was worthy of waiving. So it kind of was a council to where if the stamp didn't say it was received by the city, that is what the, kind of the staff had said that they even put on the bottom of the bills, is that it has to be in the hands, not I mailed it lately, or I put it in, or it was late. And I think that really is a good rule of thumb opposed to be subjective over what's a good story.
Is there any other business to come before the Celine City Council? Our next meeting is on October 17. We will be having a work session at 6:30 and a regular meeting at 7:30. Please make sure you get on your calendar that planning session, November 19.
Mayor, I think there's a typo in the upcoming meetings, it only lists one for November.
I didn't want to have one. November 19.
19. 19th is a Saturday.
21st.
21st. 21st, okay. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn at 9:05?
So moved.
Second.
Morrow, second Girba, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.